All right, so I'll call the meeting to order. This is a work session tonight, so we'll not have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll just get right into it. So tonight's all about our police department, including legislative updates, something from our SSD, and some homeless parking issues, a national night out. So I'm just going to turn over the police department. And it looks like Sergeant Miller's here to get us started. So it's all yours, guys.
Thank you much. Well, great opportunity to, once again, meet with you and kind of give a report card, for lack of a better word, I guess, of what's been going on. We're coming up on a year now with the creation of this unit, and we've seen a lot of success, and we've had some difficulties as well. But myself, Officer Albert Gonzalez, and Officer Albert Sund, they are in pro act, or Andy Sund, sorry. They're in pro act, and then the other part of SSD is the school resource officers as well. So this makes up our unit. And I have about 18 slides, about 20 minutes, just to kind of go over. If you have questions, please interject, interrupt, and we'll just go over it.
Perfect.
Excellent. So in the beginning of this year, we, as you all are aware, the difficulty in the north end of town, there was over 20 motorhomes, at least, maybe at 1.30 in the north end of town, our Technology Way, Eisenhardt, Old Station, and Omni Garden Road. And with the new case laws that's come down, Seattle v. Long, et cetera, and some of the COVID limitations, it was very difficult to handle. And the business owners were, without a doubt, extremely upset. So we came together with a plan, used Catholic family, veterans assistance, and just really started getting a hold of these people. What's their problem? Where are they from? How can we help? And it took about three months, but there's only two left up there. And both of them are very high up on the list for housing. So we should see them in housing very soon. A couple examples of what was seen up there. Many of them just were dumped up there. The people weren't even living in them. So I don't know how that happened, or how word got around, but people just brought them up there and plopped them up there. So many of them were towed. There's Omni Garden Road, which they kind of moved around to. Technology Center Way, which at one point, there was 10 to 15. So once we started working on that and helping, we kind of knew this would happen. So you focus on one area and moves to another. So it started coming back down into the city. So we're getting a lot of complaints now. I've seen the emails to the mayor regarding St. Jude's and some other parts. But this is what's happening now in the core of the city. Four and a block of South Wenatchee Avenue, that one was towed. And this one was on Benton Way. Now, in this particular case, it became more than a parking issue. And we are dealing with a pretty rigid, maintaining a public nuisance city code. We navigated our way through that.
This is the same gentleman that was down on near Pibis years ago.
Yes, Pibis, Benton Way, and now we saw him Thurston. So in the Pibis scenario and Benton Way, we were able to get many resources together, in effect, an arrest in both occasions. However, once it got to court, the judges don't seem to want to entertain this law in this particular case. So in both cases, they were dismissed. So I'm now upwards of 10 to 15 pages, several hours of work, these gentlemen included, of a report and potentially an arrest coming in the next two weeks. But we don't know what the court's going to do with it. So we'll try our best, but we'll let you know what happens with that. And if the judges just decline, they're going to decline. We can't do anything about that. Any questions on that?
So this stuff gets towed to our South Lot?
So in this particular case, yeah, the car, most of the stuff went to the dump. That was deemed garbage. Anything of his, clothing, value, things, necessities of life, they were photographed and put in back in his car and took to the South Lot.
Okay. And has he come to got any of the cars from the South Lot that we've towed there so far?
He did get this one, but then he abandoned it, so we impounded it. And he never got it back. He's acquired two other vehicles, though. Got it.
Unbelievable. Anyways, question, problems we're having with enforcement, based on the case law that you mentioned, Seattle and Boise. Is there any way we can use public safety, public health and sanitation? Obviously, these, there's no restroom facilities where these people are operating. Isn't there some, is there, is there some way we can use that as a tool? Or are we, are our hands tied there, too?
No, we have a little more leeway there, like especially if a motorhome's leaking black water, like, or just dumping it. I'll take enforcement right away on that and likely impound it. Impound it, not in our yard. But most of them have, I've given that warning, and most of them abide by that. That doesn't mean they just drive on the highway and dump it while they're driving. I don't know. But a lot of them go to the state parks, and I think they pay about a $20 fee to dump their black water, and then they come back. So I think that's what's occurring.
On the court front, this, is it time perhaps, and maybe this has happened, that the cities, plural, and the county prosecuting attorney and law enforcement have a kind of a sit-down with the judiciary to talk about? I know we do this with other things.
So we do. We've had, we've had conversations with the judiciary from time to time. They are delicate at best. They enforce the law, not us, and they'll do what they think is correct. And so we have, that is a standard conversation we have with them. Your chief would like us to do district court ourselves, and that is certainly an option, although there's financial considerations to that as well. So I think conversations we've had have been cordial. I think we sort of bring it up to them from time to time. We've had that email from Danielle just this week, where we've sent 70 cases to the prosecutor's office that we thought were felonies that they just said aren't, or aren't going to prosecute. So they prosecute felonies, not us. And so it's just an interesting, I don't know how to, I think we do the best we can. This case in particular, you know, we put it on Facebook and everything. The first time we arrested this gentleman, you know, within 24 hours, he's out on the street again, and I think we put it on Facebook. You know, we tried. You know, this is what, in your court system says this isn't illegal. So I don't know what else we're supposed to do, other than what these guys are doing, which is re-arrest them and take them back up again. And, you know, we can clearly meet with the, you know, I had phone calls with the district court, you know, earlier this year on some issues that the chief and others had asked me to, but it's very delicate. This is sort of a, it's both sides of the form of government. So I think it's difficult. I wish there was an easier answer. It's hard, because what you and I think should be legal, somebody else doesn't, right? This is clearly should be illegal. Whether it's, you know, the morality of it's different. That should be illegal in our city, and for some reason, the judges don't seem to think it is.
To speak to the judges, like, at a meeting, you have to be really careful what kind of communication you have with them, too. Usually, if, you know, you can talk to them about things that are not going, you know, well within the courts, as to, you know, logistics. But you can't speak to them about...
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of the specific, I was thinking of the issue very globally, the challenge to public health, to public safety, and why.
Yeah, I think that, that's still, I would say that's kind of ex parte communication a little bit, even if you're speaking about it globally, because you're making a public, a public policy argument, and it's still a legal argument, potentially, so, yeah.
And I think, I think the judges would communicate with us if they said, you know, your city code doesn't allow that, and if you changed your city code, I would enforce it. But that's really not where they're at with any of this. So, all right, sorry.
Yeah, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, the number of violations are multiple. It isn't just one or two. I mean, there are fire hazards, there are 24-hour ordinance violations, there's nuisance violations, it just goes on and on and on. So that's where it's really struggling. You know, when we get asked by citizens, why aren't we doing something about this? And it is a very difficult thing to try and explain, because we don't have a clue why it's happening this way.
Right. I think the proper answer is, for many of them, they get arrested, and the court's dismissed, they just let them out. We're going to do it again. Right, that's, from a practical standpoint, that's mostly what these gentlemen are doing.
So if it happens this next occasion here, from the Thurston Street incident, within the next two weeks, and it gets dismissed, we might have to just pivot and figure something else out.
Yeah.
Because there's too much work goes into it to have it be dismissed.
Is there, is there any changes that we can make to our ordinances that would hold up in court?
Yeah, we'd have to talk with the city attorneys and see how we can pivot the, see what, the direction the courts want us to take.
I think we'll, we'll let this run its course, and if it gets dismissed again, then we'll spend some time with Danielle and Steve, and see if there's something different we can do in our code that would, would help us in these instances.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, Linda?
Is the homeless shelter going to help, is the homeless shelter going to help at all?
Wouldn't help with Mr., our friend down there, but...
It'll help in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
But not in this particular case.
Yeah. All right, go ahead, Sergeant.
Excellent. So a little bit about gang graffiti. Due to COVID, we, a lot of restrictions obviously went in place. We weren't able to utilize VIPs. So we had, at least, we counted over 90 locations that were all over the city, and some of them were high availability locations. So we spent a lot of time, got that cleaned up, and I think there's less than five in the city right now. So good success there, and we're going to...
And you arrested the guy that was doing it just for fun?
Well, he was affiliated.
Okay, okay.
But for fun.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, we made one solid arrest, and actually, two to three. But the one individual you're referring to, he was responsible for, I'd say, 20 to 30.
Okay.
Yeah. So just a couple of quick examples. Not the greatest cover-up job, but it's better than the gang graffiti. And then we've been able to, with the particular of this unit, we're the only unit in the valley, or in, for a unit like this. The other agencies don't have a unit like this. So we work four tans Tuesday through Friday. We don't chase the radio. We just, whatever's on the stove is hot, we can act on that. And we have a lot of freedom, so thank you for that. And thanks to the chief for creating this unit. And it allows us to do other projects such as this, which Officer Gonzalez led, and he can speak to this really quick.
Yes, this was a non-drug house that we had on Southwestern, and we had been getting several different complaints that were associated to the house, to include vehicle prowls, thefts, even financial fraud, parking complaints, suspicious behavior in and around the neighborhoods with people on foot at random hours of the night. We worked with several different, different entities. So we worked with the SWAT team and Drug Task Force to come up with a plan on how to take care of that residence. We used an informant that gave us information, and we developed probable cause for a search warrant at the house, and were able to take the homeowner, or the person that was causing the problem, into custody. And he's currently still in custody, and he was federally indicted recently. So he is now out of Wenatchee. But recovered, we recovered substantial amount of heroin, methamphetamine, several different types of other controlled substance prescription medication, cash, stolen motorcycle, a stolen firearm, just to name a few of the things that we found there. And so there were also several vehicles that were inoperable, that were on the property, visible, that were also taken care of, and that's where code enforcement assisted as well.
I was going to say, it's also a code enforcement issue once the guy left.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought I walked by that on a regular basis, but that's my normal walking around, yeah.
Very good, thank you. Also, again, with the aspects of this unit, we have a lot of freedom. If a critical call comes out on patrol, we're able to jump right in and help. This was a stabbing that occurred on St. Jude's that we were able to assist and effect an arrest that night. There was also a stabbing at Meadow Park, which we were able to directly engage with and get that case wrapped up within an hour. And of course, the homicide, which we spent many, many hours on, which is still, hasn't gone to trial yet. But we were able to just work for a while there, nonstop, developing probable cause and gathering information for those type of cases. Also, we have a lot, when it's, there's nothing hot on the stove, we have a lot of time for proactive enforcement. And this is a traffic stop that Officer Sund did, and it's a pretty unique one.
It was just in the area, we'd had a house in the south that was, again, on our map, causing us some problems. And it was kind of many circles around the house. This person associated with the house and was stopped for some vehicle, like traffic infraction stuff. But we ended up locating one of the person out of Shalane's, like, lifetime comic supply, comic books.
Wow.
I think his total was over, like, closer to $200,000 of the comics. And he had, like, half of it in his car.
What?
And it was kind of luck of the draw, but it was also the ability, nothing was on hot front and center on the plate. We were just kind of out there rolling, rolling patrol, and this is kind of what we came across. So it was nice to be able to get that back to somebody who, you know, basically collected his entire life.
He was super happy. There were some amazing, I took a look at a few of those. I didn't open them, I didn't open them. But there were some amazing comics in there.
Oh, cool.
Also, as of, as of late, we've, you know, kind of my motto with the unit, and I've expressed this to the guys, is let's make other people's jobs easier. Make detectives easier, make school resource officer, patrol, and the city, your guys' job, make your guys' job easier. And that comes with making other agencies' jobs easier. Just because it happens on the other side of the river doesn't mean we shouldn't help. These guys have a ton of knowledge and a ton of background, and they can instantly help an investigation. So the one on the left there, the East Wenatchee PD shooting suspect, they, they came in on their days off, and they worked the whole weekend. They were able to identify suspects and witness and victims, and really assist in that investigation. And the center one there, that was a potential arson and monitor, and, which resulted in a burglary. They were able to help and locate that suspect and retrieve the items from the burglary, which included several laptops and an iPad. He gave a complete confession, and we were able to help CCSO in that case. Just on this last Apple Blossom weekend, there was a stabbing at School Chuck. And they were, went out to Malaga, and they helped with CCSO and their detectives, and they located all the people involved. So it's, it's a wonderful tool just to put three to four guys on a problem right away and able to concentrate on that. So we're seeing good successes there, for sure. With that, we've been some seizures with some felony drug investigations. The unit now has seized over 15,000 illegal drug funds. So it's great for the city, and, you know, we might be able to use some of those funds to help with other gear, other training for the unit, or for the police department as well.
Is that stacks of money or stacks of drugs?
That's 3 million. We haven't seen that, but I pulled that off the internet.
Those really...
Right.
Either that or...
Everybody.
Five and tens.
Right. So this is just the goal that we created, or our mission, sorry, for the Special Services Division. This is the last slide. So the mission of the Special Services Division is to improve the quality of life by providing proactive professional police services through community partnerships. A couple of goals listed down there. We cover patrol, so the other officers can train, keep up their firearms and defensive tactics and driving. We take an active role in gaining involvement, because that is really the highest risk in our mind, where random violence can occur, and we take special enforcement opportunities on them. We're trying to increase our social media involvement, making community connections. We want to be a highly trained and flexible unit, so we're looking for other training opportunities, and we're looking at creating a training budget for this division so that we can look forward for a year from now, two years from now, et cetera. We obviously need to, we talked about the individual in Thurston, we need to have creative solutions on how to solve some of these problems. Some of them involve arrests, but not all of them do. A lot of the issues we took out north, I could have arrested a lot of people, but I didn't go that route and show services instead, and that's what it's all about. It's, it's not always about arrest. We definitely, we talked about a no-barrier shelter. That's on everyone's mind, and that's a need. It's a need for every city, really. And hopefully, that's coming along, and we'll see that here in the near future. We really want to keep, maintain those relationships with other agencies. There's the potential of adding another officer from another agency and grow the unit, and so that it could be a regional type of team. Once again, the problems go from here to Shalane and over here to Waterville. So this is a regional thing, and we want to help, and we want to help drive that. Some other considerations, at the pace they work, we may need an additional unmarked car or dedicated patrol car to the unit just because of what we're involved with and how much work they do and the pace they work at. So that's kind of a brief report card for the last eight, eight months. We look forward to coming back again, but if you have any other questions, that's...
No, thanks. And again, I know you guys are the ones that are doing all these eyeball sort of requests, and so I do appreciate not only your work, but Chief Crown's insistence on making sure that we have a Special Services Division and keep asking for the funding, and we'll be able to fund it now. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep it for a long, long time because of all the good work that, that you guys do to keep our citizens safe and keep our communities safe.
I really hope that this stays, because like Sergeant Miller said, you know, it's not, it's not always about arresting, but it is always about suppressing crime. This unit I like, because that's essentially what it's doing. It's suppressing crime, keeping it under control, so.
And in addition to all the other things that we've been enthusiastic about, the council, the school resource officers have been one that the council has really been enthusiastic about that, that service. And I like to remind folks, it's not, yes, there are, there's protection of students and staff, but it's more of the interface of students with law enforcement as they grow and mature, that there's, there's a relationship, there's not a fear. There's not a conflict like there was when I was in high school. It's a relationship.
That's what it's about.
It's hugs.
Well, I agree with you. We had, you know, a pro act unit some years ago, and then it, for funding and whatever, we had to, had to drop it. And I think, you know, getting this back, I've always been a very big supporter of that mission, of what you guys do. And back then, I think it was probably more focused on the, on the gang issues and that sort of thing. But this is much more expanded, and I think, you know, a lot of good work that gets done because we have that. So certainly continue to support you the best we can.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Who's next, chief? Is it you?
Oh, yeah.
This is our legislative update? Okay.
That's a funky shot.
So obviously, you know, there's been a lot of legislative changes in Olympia, a lot of them affecting our police department. So the chief is going to go through an abbreviated 45-minute version of everything that happened and help us understand what they're going to be going through over the next 24 months.
Hopefully, we can keep it to 45 minutes.
You want me to set a timer for you?
You may need to.
Don't let Tammy know. She'll, she'll get that thing ringing.
Get the shepherd's hook out. Okay, so first of all, if they're still, yes, they are. I mean, outstanding work by that group. I mean, if you think about the fact that Sergeant Miller had literally been given, what do we need, types of questions in advance of the formation of the group, and he literally created his own specialty unit. He knew that we had some parameters that were definitely things that we needed to address immediately, but he took the ball and ran with it. He's got two very talented pro act officers, and the school resource officers report to him as well. That's a nice marriage of activity, because now you're getting what you see on the street as well as what you're seeing in the schools. And Councilman Koulas, you're exactly right. There's a lot of what they do that has nothing to do with taking people to jail or giving tickets or anything like that. It's more of thinking about crime as a holistic viewpoint. And your kids are so important in this valley. They're the type of folks that are going to come back and hopefully become entrepreneurs and add to the, our society, and it starts from there. And of course, there's some folks that have got left behind, and you actually have to try and figure out creative ways to deal with that. What I'm about to give you, in some of this legislative updates, is some of those tools are being narrowed in our toolbox, and it's, it's really unfortunate. With a lot of legislation that we see, there's unintended consequences, or there's definitely intended consequences. Just the landscape going into the legislative session for 2021. Right during the pandemic and all the associated protocols, there was remote legislative sessions, meaning there was no real in-person meetings with any of the legislatures. You either picked up the phone, or you attended a Zoom meeting or something like that. Priorities announced by the legislature were racial justice and equity, COVID response, economic recovery, and climate change. You went into a legislative session with Democrat majorities in the House, the Senate, and the governor's office.
Are those priorities, do you know, if they're in order of importance?
I don't know. So the first bill that we're going to cover that, that has became law, takes effect January 1st, it is a juvenile access to attorneys. Requires juvenile, under the age of 18, access to an attorney for consultation prior to juvenile waiving any constitutional rights if the officer questions a juvenile during custodial interrogations. That means that they're being detained, and there's some probable cause being developed. Detains based on probable cause for involved criminal activities or requests that the juvenile consent to an evidentiary search of their person, property, dwelling, or vehicle. It prohibits juveniles from waiving their rights to be provided access to an attorney, and it prohibits any statements made by juveniles from being admissible in court proceedings unless the juvenile has provided, been, provided access to an attorney. Requires a state office of public defense to provide access to an attorney for the juveniles contacted by law enforcement. So here are some, some of the impacts of that, that bill, that new law that's going into effect next year. There's currently no guidance from the State Office of Public Defense. Here locally, I've had some conversations with our Public Defender's Office. Their initial plans are to use, similar to a DUI call list, where there's numbers that can call. When a public defender is on call, they literally carry around a cell phone, and they're supposed to be available for a phone call. Sometimes, that doesn't always work out so well. So we've, we were left with more questions than answers. So how will we, will the new impact, new law impact our public defender contract? Is that possible that it could go up? Will there be additional costs to the city? How available are the attorneys? It's possibility of increased detention times, loss of evidence, longer investigations. Is the provided attorney available for court proceedings? Because they gave them the initial advice, but are they going to follow that case all the way through or will it be handed off to another attorney? And how will the new law affect local juvenile detention? As you can imagine, that that could have an impact with populations. I'm going to run through these super fast, so please, if you have a question, raise your hand. Otherwise, we're going to be here all night and people are going to get hangry. Recordation of custodial interrogations requires that any custodial interrogation of an adult or a felony offense or juvenile for any offense be electronically recorded. Both audio and video in cells, jails, or law enforcement offices. The reverse of that is if you're out in the field and you don't have access to any of these devices, you can audio record the individual. Other locations, like I said, they need to be at minimum an audio recording. Establish a limited expectation to electronic recording requirements. Limits admissibility of statements requiring electronic recording where electronic recordings were not made available. One of the solutions on this is going to be body worn cameras. In a remote environment, you have both audio and video recordings of the individual when you're doing a custodial interrogation. It is costly. As you can see, this is just one estimate that we received from one vendor. We plan on looking at several. This is the current vendor that we use for our dash cameras that are in the cars. And you know, there's limitations to that. You only get a short view for what's in front of the vehicle and the individual that's in the back of the patrol car per se. So for five years, you're looking at $266,000. If you look at the public disclosures that could increase, the management of those body worn camera footage is roughly about $86,000 a year. There's unknown increases in transcribing a recording. Some of the body worn camera companies have an automated transcription. The one that we looked at recently had about a 93% accuracy. So you're still going to have a human set of eyes looking at that transcript, listening to the recording and proofing it. There's a possibility of Department of Justice grants or ARP funds. We've just heard from other police agencies that ARP is an acceptable expenditure for body worn cameras. State v. Blake, Senate Bill 5476, that was affixed to the simple possession of drugs. Takes effect immediately. It's already in effect. So this one's, needs definite navigation. You just heard from our proactive unit. You've also heard them talk about confidential informants. Some of those are derived from possession cases. Well, that spigot's kind of turned off in this situation. So it requires a health care authority to establish a statewide substance use recovery service plan. Requires behavioral health administrative services organization to establish a recovery navigator program to provide community-based outreach, intake, assessments, connection to services, and case management and recovery services. Amends the Uniform Controlled Substance Act. It just totally gets into the piece about possession of legend drugs, counterfeit substances, controlled substances, and also prescription drugs. It's now a simple misdemeanor with the caveat, law enforcement officers are required in lieu of jail booking and referral to the prosecutor to offer referral assessment services. Authorized jail bookings and referrals to prosecutor for simple possession if two prior diversions have been offered. And law enforcement is responsible for tracking that, not the court system. Modifies drug paraphernalia, simply does some things where we normally were able to write citations or add additional charges. That piece is gone. Encourages prosecutor divert simple possession charges to assessment, treatment, and other services. Requires basic law enforcement training to include training on interactions with persons with substance disorders. Not a bad piece of the legislation. And appropriates $88 million for substance use disorders prevention, assessment, treatment, and recovery services. You'll see that there are no money for additional law enforcement. The impacts, affects quality of life issues, just some of the things that you heard about our pro act unit dealing with, homelessness, behavioral health crisis calls, et cetera. Drug abusers have no incentive to enter into treatment because those first two contacts with the law enforcement are referrals. Possibility of increased overdoses and higher rates of drug usage. Potential for poly substance DUIs. That means that there's more onboard than just alcohol, could be multiple substances. There's always been a historic connection between property crimes and substance abuse disorders and more difficult to disrupt the supply chain. We talked a little bit about that with our drug task force. Many of the cases that involve confidential informants start from simple possession cases. Next bill is House Bill 1054 Tactics. It takes effect July 25th. It prohibits chokeholds and neck restraints. We've never practiced chokeholds. We have done neck restraints at the low level use of force that you can see any given night on MMA fights where it's a submission hold. That is essentially not allowed under any circumstances. It prohibits no knock warrants. We don't use them locally. CJTC must develop a model policy for training and use of canine teams. It prohibits the use of tear gas except in three circumstances. Harm imposed by riot, barricade subject, or hostage situations. Prior to deployment of gas, law enforcement officers must exhaust available and appropriate alternatives. It doesn't say what those are. Obtain authorization from supervising officer. Announce the intent, the use of tear gas, and allow sufficient time and space for subjects to comply. And prior to deploying tear gas for riots outside of correctional facility, law enforcement agency also receives authorization from the highest elected official of the jurisdiction in which tear gas is to be used. In that situation within the city, that would be you, mayor.
Looking forward to that decision.
Yes, I'm sure. Prohibits the use of and acquisition of military equipment. It goes on to define that, luckily, our MRAPs, those that we use in our SWAT teams have been removed from that list of military equipment and we have very limited amounts of that, of military equipment in our department. Law enforcement agencies must submit an inventory of military equipment to WASPIC by November 1st and that will be reported to the governor's office and legislature by December 31st, 2021. Requires uniformed police officers are reasonably identified. We always do that even with our pro act unit folks. This is one of the big changes, is defines vehicular pursuit and prohibits a vehicular pursuit unless the officer has probable cause, which is a substantial change from reasonable suspicion that a crime, violent or sex offense, has been committed and reasonable suspicion of driving under the influence necessary for the purpose of identifying or apprehending a person poses an imminent threat to the safety of others and the officer receives authorization to engage in the pursuit from the supervisor. Prohibits law enforcement officers from firing a weapon at a moving vehicle. We already have that in policy. That's not a big change. So the impacts, increase mandatory training. Authorizes vehicle pursuit factors are going to be trained to this fall. That's going to be part of our emergency vehicle operation course training. Application of force changes. SWAT deploying of CS and CN, that should be CN gas. Major, or excuse me, the mayor authorization for riot deployment of CS and CN gas. Might need to look at legal review for authorizing you delegating that authority down if that's a direction that you want to go, mayor. And increases audit responsibilities for military equipment. Just rewinding a little bit, again, it's just for riots. There has not been a riot in the city, but you know, things are changing in the United States. That's something that you've got to, in the back of your head, think that there's a possibility at some point in time. So it makes sense to take care of that. One of the analogies that I used on a recent interview was the vehicle pursuit pieces is a marked change in our practices. Probable cause is a standard that's used to arrest someone. Reasonable suspicion is something that you use to contact somebody. And that's the very simplistic way of looking at it. You have to have more than reasonable suspicion to actually arrest somebody. The analogy I used is that over the radio, you have one of our banks call out, call Rivercom and report that there's been a bank robbery. Associated with the bank robbery is a blue sedan. Blocks and blocks away, one of our officers sees a blue sedan speeding the other direction. There is not probable cause to stop that vehicle. You don't have a description of the individual behind the wheel. You don't have a license plate. You don't have several other factors. You have reasonable suspicion that that vehicle is involved. If you turn on the vehicle, you can cross your fingers and hope that the individual pulls over, but if they don't, that is a unlawful pursuit under this law. And the other thing to be thinking about, if some, when they use the term a violent offense, that's not what you'd normally think about. If somebody walked up to you on the street and punched you in the face, knocked you to the ground, under this specific statute, it is not a violent offense. We're talking about things like assault first degree where it involves a firearm and several other things that are listed in a completely separate RCW. So those are some of the clarifications that I wanted to make sure that we're aware of. There's going to be increased time also to audit our own equipment and make sure that those reports are done on time. Jump into House Bill 1310, the use of force. That's again, effective July 25th. Replaces existing use of force statute with new provisions that authorize the use of force, of physical force, when necessary, to protect against criminal conduct where there is PC, probable cause, to effect an arrest and affect an arrest, make an arrest, or prevent escape. They don't describe to us law enforcement officers what affect and make what the difference between those two are, but I didn't make the law. To protect against imminent threat of bodily injury to any person. Establish a duty of reasonable care. Authorizes law enforcement officers use deadly force only when there's, it's necessary to protect against an imminent threat to serious physical injury or death. Requires an officer to exhaust available and appropriate de-escalation tactics prior to using any physical force. When using physical force, use the least amount of physical force necessary to overcome the resistance of the circumstance. Terminate the use of force as soon as necessary for the force to end. It continues on, by July 1st of 2022, the Attorney General will develop and publish a model policy on law enforcement use of de-escalation tactics. Requires law enforcement agencies to submit their use of force policies to the Attorney General. And requires the Attorney General by December 31st of each year to publish on its website a report of model policy and each agency's policy. Requires basic training provided by CJTC to be consistent with the use of force requirements and limitations of the bill, Attorney General's Office Model Policy on Use of Force and De-escalation. So here's what the impacts are. Increase use of force training. Obviously, you're going to have a marked change in how you're going to train to. Scenario-based training is probably one of the best tools to use for these situations and be able to know those bright lines on use of force. There is potential conflict between the duty of reasonable care and the public duty doctrine. Potential conflict with when use of force is authorized and not authorized, i.e. an individual in a mental health crisis and self-harm is occurring. What is the duty of reasonable care versus the duty, the public duty doctrine? In that situation, going back to the language, you have to have probable cause that that individual has committed crime. And in this situation, those lines can be extremely difficult to navigate in a very rapidly evolving tense situation.
Chief, excuse me, you had 25 words or less. Tell me what the public duty doctrine is.
Probably my attorneys in the back of the room will do a better job of that, but public duty is responsibilities that normally law enforcement is expected to do. Taking care, we've always had a public caretaking component. Prevent harm to individuals regardless if they're going through mental health crisis. So some of those pieces can get very blurry for us. Department policy will be needed, will need substantial adjustments. Our summer is going to be all about reworking policies and making sure that we're in compliance with these new case law, new statutes. Decertification is a big one because there's like four or five of these new laws that I'm talking about that have a decertification for police officer components to them if you don't file, follow the law as it's been created. So establish criteria for mandatory and discretionary decertification of peace officers and correction officers. It authorized the Criminal Justice Training Commission to suspend certifications. Criminal Justice Training Commission may conduct investigations into allegations of improper conduct independent of any employing agency and their investigation. Criminal Justice Training Commissions may issue public recommendations regarding law enforcement agencies' command decisions, inadequate, inadequacy of policy or training, investigations, or disciplinary decisions regarding misconduct, potentially systematic violations of law and policy, unconstitutional policing, and other matters. Expands requirements related to pre-hiring backgrounds. We're already following all those, so that isn't going to be a big issue. Requires law enforcement and correction agencies to report to CJTC within 15 days of occurrence of any death or serious injury caused by the use of force by an officer or anytime an officer has been charged with a crime.
Excuse me, chief.
Sure.
Back on that slide on the conducting, the training center, conducting investigations. Does that give them preemption? Do they, if you're conducting an investigation? Do they, if you're conducting an investigation and they come in, do they then, they override you or supersede your investigation?
You picked on, upon a very important fact, and that is that the Criminal Justice Training Commission can re-investigate, investigate side by side with our department if we had an issue, and ultimately, they would be deciding decertification or suspension of that individual independent of our investigation. So, as you guys may know locally, Sheriff Burnett is on the commission and he has some concerns over how big the reach has become with the Criminal Justice Training. So, continuing on with the decertification bill. Establish criteria for mandatory and discretionary decertification of peace officers. Authorize CJTC, oh, this one I've already covered, never mind. There we go. Civil penalties. The Criminal Justice Training Commission can impose civil penalties up to $10,000 for failure by an officer to, or an employee agency to timely and accurately report information to CJTC. It can require, it requires law enforcement and correction agencies to retain personnel records for the duration of the employee's, the officer's employment plus 10 years, and they define the personnel records, which is also a deviation from previous law, and they define them as all misconduct and equal employment opportunity complaints, progressive discipline imposed, including written reprimands, supervisor coaching, suspensions, involuntary transfers, other disciplinary appeals, and litigation records needed to comply with requirements set forth by RCW 43101095 and 43101135. The difference there is that, and I've already had a conversation with our HR director, it's different because coaching and counseling sessions were generally kept within a supervisory file. You try and monitor that individual's improvement, and then if it continues to be an issue, you can roll that into the annual performance evaluation, becomes a permanent record that gets put in to the supervisor file, or excuse me, the personnel file. Under this, that coaching and counseling session, which had a mechanism for if they've completed their, their performance improvement, can be removed from the supervisor's file. That is no longer their situation. That's part of the personnel record that goes up and kept 10 years after the officer leaves or separates. It requires CJTC to main publicly searchable machine, readable, and exportable database. Specifies the CJTC shall have sole authority to provide basic law enforcement training. Requires law enforcement and correction agencies to conduct and complete administrative investigations where officer retires, resigns, or resigns prior to the completion of the Prohibits law enforcement agencies from considering application for employment unless applicant waives all prior confidentiality agreements, which we require already. Commission membership, this is the impacts. Commissioner membership has changed quite a bit. Today, there's no longer a super majority of law enforcement on the commission. The commission is now made up of the, an incumbent sheriff, an incumbent police chief, an officer below the rank of sergeant with 10 years of experience minimum, a state or county corrections officer, public defender, a county prosecutor or municipal attorney, elected official, that cannot be a sheriff, civilian oversight or audit person with, over law enforcement, five private persons, at least one east side, two west side, underrepresented communities, tribal chair, a board member, a council member, or an enrolled member within the tribe, the attorney general or designee, the FBI special agent in charge from the saddle office, and Washington State Patrol Chief or his designees.
Geez, that's quite a board.
Yep. So, that's a substantial change, and you can see with that additional duties and responsibilities for the commission, it's a substantial change where you're going to have more and more citizens that, quite frankly, don't understand law enforcement practices and, but I think they're, it's definitely workable, depending on, on the selection and makeup of that group. New powers allowed by CJHCC to investigate officer misconduct, impose certification, suspension, and decertification. The law no longer allows resignation in lieu of termination prior to completion of an investigation and delivery of findings to CJTC. HR, as I talked about before, requires all personnel records to be kept 10 years after separation of employment, including the supervisor coaching. No limitation on CJTC certification and suspension and cannot be, those terminations cannot be the sole basis for, this is kind of in a reverse, it, you cannot use a officer's suspension or decertification as a sole means for terminating that officer. It has to be whatever act they did. That was something that was slid into this law as well. Some other impacts, I'm just going to go over these briefly. There's impeachable disclosures on the Brady List. You've all heard of that. Prosecutors must develop and adopt written protocols and what must be disclosed and how info is shared and maintained, and what circumstances an officer may be removed from that list. Sent Bill 5259, law enforcement data collection, the Attorney General contracts, the higher education. My understanding is that is Washington State University is going to administer this database, and there's going to be a substantial amount of information that we're going to have to collect off of our use of the forces, the force, and report those. Duty to intervene. Witness officers to another officer using or attempting to use excessive force must be intervened to end the action and report to the supervisor. Duty to render first aid is also a piece of that, and this is also violations can result in that decertification or suspension as well from previous. Audits of investigations are Special Investigations Unit that deals with deadly use of force. Investigations where officers are involved, those will be audited through the State Auditor's Office and the Criminal Justice Training Commission. So, here are some of our work plans that we're going to use moving forward. Policy development implementation is already an immediate need. We're expecting Lexipol, who provides our policy updates, to be dropping that, their updates any day now. And then what we'll need to do with those is go through them, deliver those to our subject matter experts within the department, make sure that they're consistent with not only the law, but our practices and training. Our training piece is as soon as the policies are completed. Prior to, priority will be placed on those policies with the highest risk. Acknowledgements of the policies will be pushed out to our officers, and we'll incorporate all the changes at in-service training, use of force, scenario-based training, et cetera. Our financial, we'll need to seek some financial approval. Here are some of the pieces that we're going to be looking at is body worn cameras, personnel to manage the video files and public disclosure requests, unknown transcription costs. I know that if you have a company transcribe from English, or excuse me, Spanish to English for court purposes, it's about $11.99 a minute. So, those can be pretty expensive. Other transcriptions are like $2.99 a minute. So, highly expensive. De-escalation-related equipment, we're going to be thinking about how we do, how do we create that time, distance, and shielding in order to meet the mandates under the new laws as well as best practices in law enforcement? And we have no idea what the trainings cost and the overtime to cover shifts while we're putting on training modules will look like. We're already in the process of looking at a grant through the Department of Justice to help defray costs on the body worn cameras and several other avenues. There's one that is specific for small agencies that has not dropped yet, and it's for agencies 50 officers or less. We're obviously authorized at 45, but we're only at 42 right now. Any questions? And let me tell you, again, here's a disclaimer, that was some of our major bills that we're going to be dealing with on a policy level. There are many others that govern things from driving the license suspended, third degrees, new laws regarding DUIs, new laws regarding sentencing, re-entry programs. All of them touch the criminal justice system, but we'd be here all night, and I know you don't want to be here all night.
So, what I would say is thanks, Chief. I'm glad I've got, or we've got you and the captains to help navigate through this. If you believe that body worn cameras are ready to go, you need to tell us that, and we'll figure out a way to get that funded, and then we'll work with you on the rest of the things from the financial standpoint, and then, you know, you've got a lot on your plate, so you shouldn't have to struggle with that part of it. Just let us know what you need, and we'll figure out how to get you the tools you need, and then execute the best you can. That's a lot to take on for any organization in a short period of time.
Yep.
Kind of hazard a guess here, that state has made all these changes, and I'm guessing that there's no money that follows.
There are some grant opportunities. I think one is $125,000 for the entire state that deals with community engagement. I imagine there's going to be a lot of competition for that relatively small amount. There is really no other money, and one of the things that we're going to be doing as an agency is, and as a city, because you guys, our public needs to know some of, how much some of this stuff is going to increase time away from our regular duties. They're going to need to know how much is expended to meet these demands, and quite frankly, the legislature needs to know that as well. I think it's just good, good management of public funds to do that. There are good things out of this. There are some, some pieces that I think are going to advance law enforcement, and there's other things that are going to make it really tough to do our job. I think ultimately rewinding back to our discussion about patrol tactics, some of you, Councilman Cuevas, you were able to sit in on the public safety as well as the mayor, public safety committee meeting. Public patrol tactics is a very good training for law enforcement, and at some point, we're going to get all of you out there, if you care to, to take a look at some of that training. It is phenomenal training, and what makes it phenomenal is the fact that we've got really good law enforcement in our valley, and they do an exceptional job of delivering that training. So, it's, those are some of the good things that I look at, and we can continue to train to them, but you, some of you have heard my analogy too, that some, if you take Shiloh County PUD linemen, how much time they spend on safety training or dealing with things that are relatively in margins of what does, what does electricity look like, act like? What is mechanical equipment that they use? How is it used properly? And they're 20 hours a month. When you take a police officer, you have left less than 1% of their time spent on training, and you're dealing with the element that you cannot predict, which is humans. You cannot predict. You can generally only just de-escalate somebody that wants to be de-escalated, and it puts us in terrible situations, and I hope that we continue to find ways to train to the higher standards so that our people can make it through their careers and do the best possible service for our public.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate the update.
You bet.
We're going to get a little bit on National Night Out?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I do want.
Captain's going to come up and.
Steve and Danielle, you get to be, you get to get called up when Captain Reinfield's done, because we had some questions that we couldn't answer when you didn't get here, so.
Mayor and Council, I only have 78 slides to address this. No, kidding. This will be very short.
And it's two minutes a slide.
For our, for our involved, for your involvement in our element, in our event coming up. Of course, it's, National Night Out is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. That'll be the national date. I have no idea what it's going to look like nationwide, but I have an idea what it's going to look like here because we're going to make it something that it should be, again, as opposed to the cancellation last year. The model changes this year when I pitched it to our regional law enforcement partners. It's a generic state of unhappiness. Some of you who were at Public Safety last month heard this already, but for the benefit of all, we're going to take it off of a large regional thing and do what we're supposed to do with it, is take it into the neighborhoods. When it's hosted in Wenatchee at Centennial Park, pretty good. We get Wenatchee population involved. If East Wenatchee is the host unit or a host agency, and we do it at Grant County Park or at Douglas County Park up there on Georgia Street off of Grant Road, it's not nearly as effective for our people in Wenatchee, and it's certainly not effective for the people living in the neighborhoods. We're going to do three events this year. It'll be Wenatchee PD only, no regional partners, no other agencies, no other social agencies, no dog and pony show and the whole line of tents and shelters. This is about getting people in the neighborhood to come out, meet each other, meet us, ask questions, hang out with us for a minute, and then go about their business. Events are programmed for three city parks, Lincoln, Washington, and Rotary. For Lincoln Park, we have the picnic shelter reserved from, I think, 4:00 PM until 9:30 at night, so 4:00 PM to close nominally for the park, and we'll set up on the Parkway side, up on top of the hill at the picnic shelter. Washington Park, we have the picnic shelter there reserved as well, and we'll set up on and off Wilson Street right there on that side of Washington Park. And then Rotary Park, we have the South Picnic Shelter reserved by the parking lot off of the west end of Maple Street. So, these locations are loosely aligned with your council districts, which we'll show you in a second, see what it looks like. We will have up to two officers and two VIPs per location. We might have one officer, one VIP, or we might have two or three VIPs somewhere, but the goal is to have some representation of the department and our volunteers present. This is about stickers to kids and about meeting people. Kids love stickers, a lot of adults love our stickers. We have lots and lots of stickers. Time to get some more in circulation. These events are designed to be community parties. I modeled this concept after what Boise has done for many years. Boise Police Department will have like 50 of these events on National Night Out. Basically, what happens, the neighborhood says, "We'd like a block party, and we want an officer for National Night Out." The officer comes in, swings by the station, grabs a five gallon bucket that's full of water balloons and stickers and some other handouts, and goes to that neighborhood, sets up shop, hangs out for a couple hours with citizens, answers their questions, facilitates a neighborhood party, and then splits. The idea of getting people out in their neighborhoods, getting them together. So, the growth from a single combined location covering both counties really, to distributed locations within our city is just the start of where I would like to go with this in future years. A big element that we'd like to work on, Boise does a great thing. Every block party has an ice cream truck stop by. Every kid gets an ice cream, whatever, out of the ice cream truck. I would love to see that at these three events. We've got to start working on that. We've got the Hawaiian shave ice truck locally. We've got the guys with the popsicles of fruit bars, who's in the south end. We have a local distributor and manufacturer of those. Get one of those. We have an ice cream truck we're aware of that Wenatchee Valley College has used. We're going to start working on that, coordinate how we. how we manage that, how we get that paid for, and what we do to be sure that every attendee gets a little bit of something in addition to a sticker. So we can get them with their, hit their shirt with a sticker, but I'd also like to see kids make a mess in the car on the way home, or just mess up their clothes. So-
Well, now I'll be there.
Absolutely. This is the kind of bait that really pulls people in. It's free ice cream. So when we look at the map, I picked these park locations, knowing about shelters and trying to distribute it. The funny thing is, if you look at the three stars on the map, they draw a line right through the residential core of the city and cross some district boundaries. Lincoln Park is obviously really focused on Districts One and Two based on its location. In the future, another location might be used, but we're going to start with the parks that we own, facilities we knew we could get, or I hoped we could get. I got lucky, and none of them been reserved out on me except Rotary, and they swapped shelters for me. Lincoln Park has no real facilities except a lot of fields. Our SROs, however, have bags full of sports equipment for playing with kids. We at least bring that stuff and help bring some level of entertainment or quasi-organized activity for some kids to that location. Washington Park is right on the boundary of Four and Five. Of course, the residential core of Four is kind of in two areas, both in the center there and in the north. It's a, it's a very interesting district for me. It's just, it's really, really long. It has large areas that are all commercial, but the residential stuff. So for the center area, what we would consider between Arondo and Cherry out to Fifth Street, residential group is right there by Washington Park. And so that's the location there. Rotary Park really fits with District Three, but after I'd done the slide, I also realized that the north residential part of District Four is really close to Rotary Park as well. So this is really an opportunity to reach all of those. My hope coming out of this meeting today is just a request, please email or contact me if, as a council member, you're interested in helping us host one of these locations. I will also be putting out the call for volunteers for officers. We're going to assign an officer to each of the three locations to be the coordinator and be responsible for figuring out how we're going to make that happen. So we'll get you paired up. I'm going to hold off on marketing until July 5th and let Independence Day do their thing, because it's a return to that really big event. It's a return to who it should be. And so we want to lay off on that. We've talked about it very lightly, but starting July 5th, we'll market. I am also, I have the Coho time slot on July 26th. It's kind of our parting shot. I'll go on the air with any council member that wants to join me. Linda Harold's already stated she would like to do so, but if, if it's somebody else with a, especially with a district, especially if you're going to engage with one of the parties, sir, we'll gladly take you on Coho and talk about this and kind of talk about the intent. We'll hit all of our social media, which spreads pretty good. The good thing is, we make a social media post. If it's something we want to hear more about, we will get calls from our media outlets, usually within twenty minutes. So we've got one thing scheduled. I'd like to schedule something with NCW Life, but I'd like to fill in the gaps as well.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
The, the time that, when, the time that you're looking at?
Yes. We won't start these events until like six. So it's an evening thing. We'd like to encourage, as we market, folks, bring your picnic lunch, bring your barbecue, bring whatever's appropriate for the park where you're at. Make it a neighborhood party. Future evolution, I would like to see more of a model where we put it out there and say, hey, we're going to host one or two events, but National Night Out is for your block parties. Set up a block party. We'll help you with your permit for street closure, which is easy. If my parents can do it every year, anybody can. And they do every year. And then facilitate a more distributed set of locations. After the National Guard recognition event at Cafe down there on Lewis Street, we'll be doing one there next year guaranteed, because they're going to want it, and we'll gladly take care of that, because that, Lincoln Park's great. That's in the neighborhood with a population that we don't always reach all that well, and a lot of people who do like us, and will come out and see us. And the Chacones are great facilitators for that.
Can't think of a better place to spend my-
I think that sounds fabulous.
Can't think of a better place than to spend my birthday than at Washington Park.
All right.
So I'll be there. What are some of the other marketing things that you're considering besides social media and, the mayor has regular, well, we all have, we all signed up, right, for co-interviews? I have one in July 19th, for example, but any-
After July 5th, every media opportunity we have, we should pitch this. So I'll create a short little guide, just a few talking points. We'll keep it simple for that. So every time anybody from the city gets out there, if they want to push that, that's great. We'll hit it with our social media. I want to get on NCW Life TV. Their reach is bigger than we think it is, but it's partly of how they market through their social media and internet as well. Coho, I'll try to talk our way into another live hour on KPQ like the chief and I did a couple months ago with Dave Bernstein. And beyond that, I just think every opportunity we have to make contact with anybody, we push it starting July 5th.
So if you could provide us with something that I, for example, I could turn into, we'll just call it an elevator speech?
Yes, sir.
Since I know neighbors that live in there that I can kind of do the tree, if you will, you know?
Yes, sir.
Can you contact two or three of your neighbors and have them come over for ice cream?
Absolutely, sir. Anything we can do that's organic is the best part.
Okay.
What we're really trying to do is get that draw back into our, the goal of National Night Out when it started was to pull people out of their houses in the evening and realize your neighborhood is safe. Get to know your neighbors, get to know your police department, how they can help you. We had it here for a few years. It went away, and then a Target employee approached me going, why don't we do National Night Out here? And I had no idea what you're talking about, because Target used to be huge in this, which is why they've been sponsored even after the company quit sponsoring it. It still helped. And who knows? They might want to throw money at an ice cream truck, too, to make this happen. And I'll be, I'll be paying everybody I know here shortly. But any, any other traction we can get from council members, especially involvement, is going to be amazing. I think it's a real opportunity for everybody in our community.
Very good.
No, but I will build talking points and get into you right away, sir, because like I said, July 5th is coming up fast. We want to give Independence Day their cushion, and then we want to dominate the information stream here. I want people in Kashmir asking, when's our National Night Out, so that the sheriff feels uncomfortable.
Good man.
I try.
Thanks, Captain. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So Steve and Danielle, can you come up for just a second or two? I'm sure you're really excited to come up.
Girl the heck out of you.
Some of us didn't know we were going to be attending.
Yesterday, you know we were coming up.
Excellent. So we had some questions when the Special Services Division was here working on our local friend who likes to hoard and park his car in certain locations around our city, and he's been arrested at least once, if not twice, and tends to be let go each time. And so I think Councilmember Bailey and Councilmember Kulas each had a question, is something in our city code that we can change that would help with prosecutions in these instances, or are we just sort of doing the best we can?
I think we're doing the best we can. However, you also are doing an uphill battle, because our current judiciary is very sympathetic to the homeless situation. You also have community groups such as Northwest Justice Project, who are assisting the homeless individuals and assisting the attorneys representing them with some resources and some arguments to make in court. The judiciary, we are doing an uphill battle, because they keep finding ways or reasons to let the individuals go and have made comments that they are, the court is sorry that they're even being prosecuted. So in one instance, one of the individuals that we are having this issue with was arrested. He didn't show up for court. We asked for a warrant. The court was trying to find every way to not issue a warrant, and even trying to convince me not to ask for the warrant. And when I finally said, no, we are asking for the warrant to be issued, he told the defense attorney he was sorry that he had to do it. So we all are also having some of the judges look at our city code and put them in such a strained interpretation that they find a way to our, to dismiss the case. Like, we have one case up on appeal right now. The underlying facts are, it was down by Pivas Market. The individual was living out of his car, but he had a bunch of materials strewn across the sidewalk. And the judge ruled, because the police did not put in their report that they did not actually see a different person try to pass that area of the sidewalk, that it wasn't an interference, even though nobody could pass on the sidewalk. Essentially, if you take that same logic, the court, we'd have to do stakeouts at all of these areas where people are blocking the sidewalks and videotape somebody getting blocked before our current court, under their current interpretation, would allow our pedestrian interference charge to stand. But like I said, that's up on appeal, because we don't think their interpretation is actually correct nor valid. So, but the appeal hasn't been run in courts.
Their next one will be, though, I can see this, all the vehicles that we see, the people park in their driveways, and they're hanging out over the sidewalks. And so the courts are going to easily just point to that and say, you're not enforcing it on those folks. Why, why these?
Councilmember Kulas, let's, just keep it quiet.
Yeah.
Don't give them more arguments, but yeah.
I know. It's just-
Yeah. But if you take their logic, people could rope off roadways.
Yeah.
And until we see a car that wanted to go down that roadway, it's not a crime.
Right.
And, I mean, the, the logic in my mind is not sound nor valid.
Yeah. No, I agree.
That's why you guys are getting the complaints, and we're doing the best. And we got our SSD group doing what we can do, and we're trying our best to work through the system again and provide another case. But, you know, we continue to obviously get emails from the neighborhood and phone calls and complaints and, you know.
Part of it, too, you know, our goal isn't necessarily put these guys in jail. Mostly it's a tool to get them moved off the street and get them moved around. So we use it as a way to do that and actually do the cleanup. So with the worst offenders we've had, that's what we've done.
Yeah.
And then whether they actually get put into jail, I mean, that was never our goal, really. No.
But the problem is, is they, they get out of jail. They don't spend any time in jail. They get any mental health counseling, they get nothing. They go back and they get their car again. They find a different intersection, and they offend again, and it takes us a month to get a case together.
That's a problem. It's a repeat offender.
Yeah.
But we do the whole- You're trying to make their life uncomfortable.
Then we do the whole thing again. Yeah.
Right.
What else do you do?
Yeah. So for our friend Juan, this is number three. Yeah.
Yeah. He's on number three with the potential of number four coming down the pike.
Yeah.
And, but in his case, we have attempted, we've had a bunch of tools in our toolbox, one of them being assistance and collaborative effort with Catholic Charities to provide him mental health services. Catholic Charities told us on one of our issues that, one of our cases, that they attempted to provide him as much services as they could provide, and he was not welcoming of those services. So we only have so many tools, and we're left with using our criminal ordinances to assist us, because we, that's our last tool. So.
So the last thing that I mentioned briefly was the email you sent earlier this week about the felony cases that you've sent off to the county, and they've sort of declined to do anything with them?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, help us understand that a little bit.
So what, how the process works is that the police department arrests somebody for a felony. Then if the court finds probable cause for the arrest or for the charge that they were arrested for, there's a seventy-two-hour period in which charges have to be brought, if they're held in custody, or if they are on condition. So within that timeframe, the courts, or excuse me, the prosecutors have made the decision that they don't, they will not be filing the felony charge that the police have arrested for. Because it happened in the city of Wenatchee, it then gets sent down to my office for review on a gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor charge, so non-felony. And then we either charge what we can, or if we don't find a basis, or if there's maybe a legal issue that we find regarding a stop, then we don't charge. Generally, there are about twenty to forty-ish cases per year that are declined by the county that get sent to my office for charging. We felt like we were receiving a lot of declined charges from them. And so our staff went through the cases that we have received from the county since January of 2021, and we're almost at eighty cases just through June. So it's very significant. It, it could affect how much we pay for the jail. It could affect how much we pay for public defenders.
Passing the buck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds like it's just a budgetary move.
Yeah.
Tony's part.
Yeah. It could affect, you know, how much we pay for filing fees for the court. That, coupled with what Chief Crown stated regarding the state v. Blake legislation, which is the unlawful possession of controlled substances, that, I believe, will have a significant effect on our caseload, because all of those heroin charge, possession charges, the cocaine charges, all of those charges meth are now going to be funneled through my office as a non-felony case. So, yeah, that legislation, coupled with some of the declining that is occurring and some of the other issues between our courts, our caseload has, has, our, our time on our caseload and our caseload have increased.
So any solutions to that, besides calling the prosecutor and talking to them, or having some sort of conversation with them?
Regarding the decline charges?
Yes.
Uh, no, that's, I think that's one of our only options. And remember, Doug Shea recently retired, so we're dealing with a new prosecutor, Robert Selby, who doesn't have a lot of experience in, in terms of the felony world.
Right.
Or the criminal world. He comes from the civil, civil side of things.
Well, sounds like an opportunity.
We haven't talked to them about it. I mean, we don't know what their motivation is, but I'm assuming, yeah, budget. Like, they're low on staff. They've had the same problem everybody's had, hiring people. They may have been short, you know, and they just couldn't handle it. Yeah.
I don't think that's one of the statutory factors for decline, but, yeah.
Well said.
We do feel like they should be prosecuting some of the charges that are, they are declining.
Back to my earlier question about dealing with this on the safety, health and safety side. Any thoughts on that? I mean, our, the picture that was shown with our, the pile, you know?
Our friend, yeah.
There's all kinds of potential, harboring, you know, testaments and disease to catching fire and somebody dying in there, or being harmed.
Which just happened over in Seattle.
Yeah, right.
Two people died.
Yeah. Yeah. So your thoughts on, or any way we can use that as a, as a tool?
Well, we had a case where one of the homeless individuals actually did try to start a fire near a dumpster. And that case was ultimately dismissed, because when he went to Eastern State Hospital, they found him not competent. Yeah. So I don't, the only thing we could do in that one was refer them to the designated mental health professional to do a civil commitment evaluation. But if they civilly, if they don't agree to civilly commit him, he goes back on the street.
You keep us posted if there's stuff, you think, from an ordinance standpoint, that would give us more tools in the toolbox. And I think the council would be interested in looking at those if you find something that you think might help.
I actually, in answer to your question, too, Jim, I actually view, once we get our low-barrier shelter in place, where we can, we can house every possible person, I think then, in my view, it'd be easier to explain to the courts that this is, we have a wide scope here of things we can do. We need court enforcement on certain aspects of this problem, or we can't get them into treatment. We can't get them into housing. We have, this is a community problem. We need the courts to do their part. And I, I just think, once we have that in place, we'll be better suited to do that. But as of right now, it's hard to deal with the camping and the, you know, people in their cars and stuff.
And this is not a Wenatchee problem. I mean, this is an everywhere problem. Steve and I just recently attended a conference with statewide municipal attorneys, and we're all trying to say, how, what do we do? You know?
We actually have a pretty light compared to.
Yeah.
We're trying to avoid it getting worse.
And, you know, it's obvious for us, you know, we're not, I say, we're not trying to criminalize homelessness or home freeness. It's, it's the- to criminalize homelessness or home freeness, it's, it's the health and safety, and the miscreant behaviors, and the behavioral health issues that the community is, you know, it's not the fact that someone is living differently, that's, that's not legal or illegal, that's isn't what we're doing, it's the consequence, it's the effects of that, that the community is found to be unacceptable, in a very broad sense.
Yes, and the community has said it's unacceptable, the problem is the courts have ruled against us, and so we are fighting this battle with one hand tied behind our back, if not two hands tied behind our back, and we're doing the best we can. Quite frankly, as Danielle said, we're doing way better than a lot of other cities, but we can't, we can't just back away, we gotta keep putting the pressure on that we can, and keep our SSD folks doing, and keep arresting people, and keep letting the community know we're trying as hard as we can. All right, didn't mean to call you up, but it came up earlier.
And I, I-
Yeah.
Something that we really need to focus, focus on is keeping the community informed as best we can, and, you know, let them share in our frustration, because they keep asking us, "Why can't we do something, why can't we do something?", and they need to know.
Yeah, and I think we do some of it, there were some on Facebook when we, when our friend got released, and we'll continue to tell the story, and I tell it on Coho when I'm on there, but there's a lot of people that don't, I mean, there's a whole bunch of people that don't pay attention to the media anymore, and don't know what the rules are, and just, it's unacceptable Wenatchee, so just fix it, and, you know, that's a hard one to answer, too, yeah. All right, thanks, guys.
I like it that we gotta keep, we gotta keep moving forward and trying, so.
I agree. All right, we got a regular meeting next Thursday, 5:15, no executive session next week, so-
Frank?
Yeah, Linda?
Do you want an update on the low-barrier shelter?
Is there an update?
Already what?
Yeah.
Well, this has been a rough draft of the, I've seen a rough draft of the interlocal agreement. I met with Glenn last week, and we went through it, and it addresses everything that I think the council is concerned about. He was meeting, I think he's meeting this week with Lori Barnett from East Wenatchee, she had a few things she wanted to ask. As soon as that's done, he's planning on sending it to the city attorney to make sure I've got it, no chains are crossed, and then he should come back to council. Also, Salvation Army is very interested in marketing with us, and maybe putting the low-barrier shelter down there beside their facility, and, but it's gonna take about, yeah, it's gonna take about three months to get a proposal to that, so, that's the latest.
All right, thanks, and then Glenn's here, anything to add to that?
Yeah, we, we sent the Eastern Wenatchee, the draft interlocal a couple weeks ago, but they're down two staff members, and my guess is I probably won't hear back from, we had an initial discussion where she was supportive and was looking at some huge tweaks. I probably won't see those till next week, and then we'll provide it to legal counsel for a review, and then at that point, we'll want to elevate that to the councils, to get that moving. And I think we have a good framework for the partnership with Eastern Wenatchee with that. Next, the Major Jimenez, who's the local lead of the Salvation Army,'s been on leave, he is, he returns this weekend, so I'm asking, are they okay with a site visit next week to continue the discussions? And then, we want to engage a contract with some site planning to see what can be accommodated on the site for some decision-making, to see if that's a good fit.
And I ask this every time, how's East Wenatchee doing for finding locations? Do we have any idea, or is this part of their down-staffed people, that they're not beating the leads over there?
They have not been able to spend a time on that, at this point. But in the, sort of the setup on that is, through the interlocal, that we'd be the primary staff. So, as we, we've been spending the last two months on transition planning, and working on a transition, and accommodating, splitting off on our funds, we'll just start, we'll to have more time, probably by mid-July, the training will start to wean down as far as training county staff on administering the Schland Douglas funds, and that will give me some additional resource to start working on that. But I've been trying to engage with the Salvation Army, we also have another site that's adjoining some city-owned land, that we've been looking at getting some survey work to get some information on that, so we're looking at that, that site as well. But I'm looking for just more staff resource to help me out on that.
So, we're working on ours, they know that they're supposed to be working on theirs, but I don't know if they've come by the site yet, so we'll just keep pushing them, and, I think we're planning on 20 to 25, and the need is 40 to 45, so.
Tell them how many they need.
Yeah, we'll need them to jump on their side as well. All right, that's all I got, see you guys next week. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Linda, thanks, Keith.